Thank you, Ms. Roof. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the call to order the Tuesday, October 13, 2020, regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees for Richland District Two. And now we will entertain a motion regarding executive session, which is item 2.1.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student admission requests into the district's adult education program.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been properly moved and seconded, and seconded by Mrs. Mackey. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please do so by registering your vote or hand vote. Dr. Elkins voted in the affirmative.
The vote is seven to zero.
Wonderful, thank you. The motion carries, and now we will go into executive session. Good evening again. We would like to, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Mr. Shad.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that we come out of executive session and enter to public session, the Richland Two School Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Agostini. I read her lips.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of ending executive session and going into public session, please do so by registering your vote.
Mr. Chair, it didn't pop up for me, but I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Manny.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Mr. Chair, you keep freezing, so if I blank out on you, that's why.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what's going on, okay.
I promise it's not intentional.
Okay, yeah, right.
The vote is seven to zero.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The motion carries, and we entered executive session at 4:31 PM and left out at 5:00 PM, where we discussed a student admission request into the district's adult education program. Now we'll move on to item 3.1 Inspirational Moment and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mrs. Mackey and guests.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. The person who has been kind enough to grace us with his presence tonight, and he's a very busy man, is Brigadier General Milford H. Beagle, Jr. And after he's finished less than us with a few of his words this evening, he will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, and of course, Ms. Roof will flash an image of the flag across the screen, so that he can do that. And just to give you a little bit of a background about him, Brigadier General Milford Beagle, Jr. assumed the duties as the 51st Commanding General for the U.S. Army Training Center in Fort Jackson, U.S. Army Training and Doctrine Command on the 22nd of June, 2018, after serving as Deputy Commanding General for Support, 10th Mountain Division, Light Port from New York. Brigadier General Beagle is a native of Enery, South Carolina, and commissioned into the infantry after graduating from South Carolina State University in 1990 as a distinguished military graduate. Brigadier General Beagle has led and commanded troops at every echelon from platoon to brigade. He has soldiered with five regiments. His key staff assignments include service as a planner and operations officer at battalion and brigade level, as a chief plans branch, G3, 8th Army, Republic Korea. On the joint and army staff, he's served as the Joint Strategic Planner and later Executive Assistant to the Director, J7, as well as a division chief, J5, Joint Improvised Explosive Device Defeat Organization. On the army staff, he served as the executive officer to the vice chief of staff of the Army. Brigadier General's command and operational experience include Operation Iraqi Freedom, Iraq, Operation Inherit Resolve, RAC, and Operation Enduring Freedom, Afghanistan. Brigadier General Beagle holds two master's degrees from Kansas State University, Manhattan, Kansas, and the United States Army School of Advanced Military Studies from Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. He also earned the Expert Infantryman Badge, Combat Infantryman Badge, Parachutes Badge, Air Assault Badge, Ranger Tab, Pathfinder Badge, and the Army Joint Staff Identification Badge. Brigadier General Beagle is married and has two children, one an army lieutenant and the other a university student, and of course, he and his wife are proud Richland Two alumni parents. We have him here tonight, obviously, for his leadership skills and I like what he stands for. He is a strong parent, partner, and advocate for Richland Two, but for education, period, and he is an ambassador of kindness. So we appreciate you having you here, Brigadier General Beagle, and without further ado, I will give you the floor, and when you're finished, if you'll lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, and thank you enough, well, I can't thank you enough for being here, I know how busy you are.
No, that's okay. I tell people there's a big difference between busy and being productive, and if we all look up the definition of busy, it just simply says having a lot to do, and we all have a lot to do, but there's a big difference between, you know, activity and productivity. So this is a very productive time for me, and I appreciate the opportunity. So are we good audio/video? Can you hear me, see me? Okay?
Yes, sir, we're good.
Okay, okay, great. Well, you guys kind of know my initial spiel is, I'm always told I can talk as long as I want to talk, but I was told I got five minutes to talk as long as I want to talk. So I'll make sure I'm respectful and mindful of everybody's time, but hello to the entire team, and it's great to see all of you come up on the screen, and I can't tell you enough of just how, you know, pleased I am with this opportunity. The one thing I will tell you, and I know you went through the whole bio and everything else, but I like to tell folks, I'm a South Carolina native, I'm a product of the public school systems here in South Carolina, to include the colleges, and very proud to be a South Carolina State Bulldog, but thank you for all the things laid out in my bio. I am deeply humbled to have this opportunity for the inspirational moment, and I tell you, I've waited for a long time for this call, so I don't know if we're at the bottom of the barrel or what, but I'm so excited to be able to do this for you, and I know what an honor it is, and I just can't thank you enough for this opportunity that I have. And one place I want to start really quickly and kind of get through some of my points and notes is, was with one of my favorite quotes by John Bonian, and he says, "You have not lived today until you've done something for someone who can never repay." And I'll circle back to that quote here in a minute, but I really love that quote from John Bonian, and I'll refer, you know, back to that, as I said later on, but you can't understand where a person is going, you can't understand a person's motivations or what their interests are until you know where they've been. So that's kind of how I'm going to use my time, is to tell you where I've been. And I grew up as the son of a truck driver and a cotton mill factory worker. My home was broken by divorce when I was in the seventh grade, and no one in my immediate family served in the military other than a few distant uncles and cousins that I had. But as a result of this, and the good thing for me, my next-door neighbors were my grandparents, and the good thing for me was I was able to have breakfast with my grandparents every single day, up until I left home and went to college, and that was very special, and I will tell you that I've not met people that were more kind, more humble, and more thankful than those two people. And it was from these two, as well as my other grandparents, that I also noticed the trait of hard work had been passed down, you know, our family lives, and it was also deeply embedded in our DNA. And so I learned the value of hard work very early on, and that was always cultivated and nurtured through my grandparents and my parents, even though they were divorced at that time, but everybody else in my family. And I want to share but one small example of that with you, and in my 12 years of high school, I missed perfect attendance by one day, and that tells you what bumps can do for you, so I missed it by one day. And I will never forget during my senior year, when I saw two of my peers get awarded perfect attendance, and some of you may have heard me tell the story before, because it still sticks in the brain, Chris Rush and Jackie Higgins walk up on that stage and get the perfect attendance award for 12 years of high school, and I missed it by one day. And I'd actually put in a lot of the work, and so yes, that still scars me to this day. But more importantly, the other thing that I never forget from my high school experience was the day our guidance counselor looked at me in the eye and stated that I should not pursue a college education, I should pursue a vocational occupation. Then I wanted to go to college, I was an A and B student, and I was also a three-sport letterman. And so that counselor lit a fire in me that still has not been extinguished to this day. This is the great thing about that short conversation. I was motivated by someone that thought I shouldn't, I couldn't, and I didn't need to try. And ironically, the same guidance counselor remains in touch with me to this day, mainly because of who I have become and not because of who I was. She's all, she has no idea what she said to me over 35 years ago, and I have no intention of telling her, and many people have told me, "You should tell her, you're still in contact, you know her," those type things, she's asked me many a time for favors that I have done for my old high school, but I'm proud that she's proud of me, and we're also Facebook buddies, so that definitely lets you know where we sit, so you're Facebook buddies and you're in good graces with someone. And I should thank her for what she said, but I never have, and I truly appreciate her for what she did. And what did she do? She placed me in a position to meet people where they are, not where you want them to be. She put me in a position to never let anyone place a ceiling over my head, and she put me in a position to always strive to help others. Service to our nation has provided me all those opportunities and many, many more, to serve something bigger than myself, to inspire others, and also to serve in a meritocracy. And so most of you and all of you know what a meritocracy is, but I can go as far as I want to go, based on my own merits, not based on what someone thinks I should be or ought to be, and that's a meritocracy to us, for those that serve. And as servicemen and women, we are always thanked for our service, but most forget or can never imagine the sacrifice, and similar to all of you, we do provide a service, but different from many others, the sacrifices that we make for many others is something that we can never be repaid for, and nor do we seek repayment, and this is why we serve. So the service that educators and our faculty provide, and all of you, to our students around the world, is invaluable to all of us, to our nation's most precious resource, which all of you know is our nation's sons and daughters. So I can't even imagine the sacrifices that you make, but I appreciate you all for the sacrifices that you make to do what you do. So thank you for your service and your sacrifice. Not very often you get to reciprocate in kind with those words, but I do. The one thing that we all have in common is servant leadership, which I really believe, which simply implies identifying and meeting the needs of others. I do it every day, and I'm pretty sure that many of you do the same, every day. You meet, you identify, and you meet the needs of others. Repayment is not the goal, nor should it be. We should all do what we do to lift someone else up higher to a different level, but we can counter this every single day, and that's what we have to be mindful of and self-aware about, is not to be counter to those things, pulling someone down with your own words, like the guidance counselor. But unbeknownst to her, as I've told you before, her words, fortunately for me, had the opposite effect. We can counter this by allowing our actions and intentions and intentions not to be in alignment, and most people don't really think about that. We judge ourselves based on our intentions, but everybody else judges us based on our actions. And I've heard the saying for a long time, "Never grade your own homework," which I never do, and a lot of times we grade ourselves based on those two things, our intentions and not our actions, but we always have to wonder and should wonder, what grade will somebody else give us, are those two things in alignment? We can counter a lot of what I mentioned earlier, and that ability to lift others up, simply by not realizing the power of hard work, and you must work hard to inspire others, and you must work hard to inspire. It's a lot of hard work when you think about it. So don't underestimate anybody's talent or their work ethic. Cultivate it and nurture it when you see it. I've had my talent and my work ethic overlooked once, but I vowed never to do that to anyone else. Hard work beats talent when talent fails to work hard, is another one of my favorite sayings, and that's what I've learned, and that's what somebody inspired me to do, even though they didn't think they were inspiring me. And I'll end by saying, live every day in such a way that you're always doing something that someone else could never repay. So with that, I think I've gotten within my five minutes, but I want to thank all of you again for this opportunity, and thank all of you for your leadership, especially during these pandemic times. Your fighting spirit has allowed and helped all of us get through, and our entire community, and I appreciate you all for that, and appreciate you all for this opportunity. So with that, I will go ahead, if the flag flashes up, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Give me just a moment, Brigadier General, and I'll get it going for us. All right, everyone should see the flag, and you can begin, General Beagle.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, General Beagle. Mr. Shad?
Thank you so much, Ms. Mackey, and General Beagle, my very, very, very good friend. Thank you so much, we appreciate those inspiring words.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir, and thank you for your service and those you command. Yes, sir.
Mr. Shad.
Okay, and now we will move on to item...
Mr. Shad, I just wanted to say thank you to the general as well, he's my classmate from South Carolina State, just wanted to say thank you so much and so proud of you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, now we'll move on to item 4.1 Approval of Agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Shad.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the October 13, 2020, meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the agenda, do so by registering your vote.
The vote is six to one.
All right, thank you, the motion carries. Moving on to item 5.1 Consent Agenda, is there a motion?
Mr. Shad.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the October 13, 2020, the regular board meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Any discussion? All right, I'll, please register your vote at this time.
The vote is seven to zero.
Thank you, the motion carries. On to item 6.1 Public Participation. Mrs. Libby Roof from the Communications Department, and Dr. Davis. We'll have public participation at this time, Ms. Roof.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. We received three responses on our public participation submission form, and so I have those three to share with you tonight, so we'll only need one public participation section this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm going to pull up the comments so people can see them as I read them. Just a minute to get that, so it's big for everyone to see. Our first one comes from David Oberly. Hello, Board and Administration. Thank you for the plan to move us into Phase Two on November 4. I am pleased to see that we are following the science that was approved with no opposition by people saying it was too lenient back in July. Many are now trying to doubt the validity of that data, but the numbers don't lie. We are ready. In my almost three decades of working statistics, I have seen the adage proved out many times that you can make numbers say what you want them to, but with the parameters in place in here, that is not the case. In fact, as of Sunday, October 11, the county is now in the moderate category for cases per 1,000, based on the de-hack data shown on their website, which anyone can view. Also, the percent positive is about to be below 10%, which is another crucial criteria. In fact, the last 17 days, Richland County is just at 10.4% positive. While we now have a definitive return date, the next three weeks will be tough. My twin door first graders still experience meltdowns due to having to be on the Chromebook as well as internet outages beyond our control. I look forward to November 4 very much for my wife and daughters to return to the classroom where the best learning can be had. It should be noted that based on the last Facebook Live event, a majority of students plan to return to the classroom during Phase Two. I also want to thank the people at Shandam Baptist, their two days a week e-learning helped, was well worth the fee, and then some. Having that resource in a Christian environment was very much appreciated. Thank you again for the plan to move to Phase Two. A next comment comes from Kevin Thompson. Will District Two staff be tested regularly by the district once Phase Two begins? And our last comment tonight comes from Gus Philpott. Members of the Board, I request a response from the district to my two questions. To what extent is the 1619 project being introduced, taught, or discussed in any classrooms in the Richland Two School District? If it is not yet in the Richland Two School District, will the school board be consulted before it is taught? I look forward to your response. And that, Mr. Shad, concludes public participation for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Roof. Now we'll move on to item 7.1 Voting on Executive Session Items. Student admission request into the district's adult education program, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for student one.
Thank you, is there a second? Second by Ms. Agostini?
Second, yes, please.
All right, is there any discussion?
Dr. Holmes, what's your vote?
Dr. Holmes, did you vote? Did you put your vote in?
She looks frozen on my screen.
Yeah, and then she moved. Talking a little bit. Dr. Holmes? Oh, she can't hear.
Okay.
Is it a yes? Oh, she doesn't hear anything, okay. Hold on one second.
You got it, Mr. Shad, I could call her. Dr. Holmes, can you exit the meeting and come back in? If that's all right, Mr. Shad, we'll pause while we do that.
Yeah, she did vote yes.
Vote.
We cannot hear you, Dr. Holmes.
The vote is seven to zero.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Before we move to the next item, we're going to see if she can join us back in, drop off and come back in.
All right, and so we'll move on to item 8.1. If new business, no action requested, a proposal for the 2021-2022 school year calendar. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, to the members of the Board, to our viewing public and community, Richland Two families, to executive staff, this afternoon and this evening, we're going to present to you for purpose of the proposal of the calendar, and then our next board meeting, we will ask for the approval of the calendar. We have Dr. James Anne Shealy, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Academics. She and her team were responsible for putting the calendar together, as well as working with our vast members of our community, our family, I should say, in order to bring this proposal forward to you this afternoon. So I'll step aside and let Dr. Shealy step in to present the information to you for your consideration. Dr. Shealy?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Mr. Shad, members of the Board, and Dr. Davis. I am here tonight for first reading of our 2021-2022 calendar. Our Faculty Advisory Council and Parent Advisory Council completed our work fall of 2019, following the same protocols and procedures that we followed for several years. FAC provided nine viable calendars, and we were scheduled to vote on the top four of those nine calendars beginning in February.
Dr. Holmes back in here, too, I apologize. Multitasking is not my expertise tonight.
You're awesome.
I'm having lots of technical difficulties, give me just a second. I'm going to close it and come back in, I apologize.
No worries.
Running multiple screens, your mouse, and nothing seems to work right. Calendar. And I believe I've delayed long enough to, maybe we can get Dr. Holmes back in here before you start back. Dr. Shealy, if you will, give me a minute to get her in. Let's see, Dr. Holmes should be coming in. Let's see. She is in the process of joining us. Dr. Holmes, can you hear us? All right, I'm going to ask you to unmute, make sure you're good. You're still muted.
And I think she's using two devices, and one's still connected.
Okay, now, now, I don't know what happened, I could see y'all, but I couldn't hear anything. I'm back.
Okay, all right, we're going to turn it back over to Dr. Shealy then. Thank y'all for your patience so much.
Thank you. And Libby, if you can go to the next slide, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. A bill was introduced striking the uniform start date requiring us to not start before the third Monday in August in Section 591425, the South Carolina Code of Laws. So because of that, our FAC and PAC decided to suspend voting until we hopefully got some more traction and movement with that bill. Unfortunately, as you all know, COVID happened, so the bill died, and then we went into the pandemic. So because of that, we were delayed with voting, but we continued with our process as same as always, and voted the week of September 20 through the 27th. I'd like to share with you that this is the first time in the process that we actually put these calendars on social media, so that a vast public could view those. We had 5,244 votes, and we felt like you might be interested in knowing how that compares to votes in the past, and so in 2021, we had 5,509 votes cast, in 2019, 2020, we had 4,917 votes, and 2018, 2019, we had 4,635. Option B received the greatest number of votes from all groups. We like when that happens, when the number one calendar that's chosen is chosen by all groups. It doesn't always happen, but we like when it does, so for parents, current employees, and employees, option B was the number one choice. So as is our tradition, I'll go through the highlights of our 21-22 proposed calendar.
Dr. Shealy, will you give me a moment while I pull that up for everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I don't think we need your presentation anymore, so I can show this as big as I possibly can. Okay.
Okay. We have six workdays before the first day of school. Our first day of school is on Wednesday, August eighteenth. We have Labor Day as a holiday, and we have an in-service day on October twenty-second, which gives our students a little break in that stretch. We have a five-day Thanksgiving break, ten days for our winter break, teacher workday, which is always really requested, especially by our high school teachers at the end of semester one. Of course, we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King holiday, President's Day holiday, another in-service on March eighteenth, which again is a little bit of a break for our students. Spring break does include Good Friday. We celebrate Memorial Day. The last day of school therefore would be Thursday, June second, with a teacher workday on Friday, June third. Members of the board, that's our recommendation, and as Dr. Davis said, lots of teamwork went into this, FAC, PAC, as well as our Accountability Department. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Davis and Dr. Shealy. Board members?
Mr. Shad.
Ms. Zagostini, and then Dr. Elkins.
Okay, thank you. And just a real quick question, looking at the spring break then, so that means that we'll have spring break before Easter.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Elkins?
Just wanna say thank you so much for the calendar. As you mentioned earlier, it is very rare that everyone is in a cohesive mood on the calendar. Thank you. And so excited that we'll get an opportunity to have that entire week off for Thanksgiving. And several of the other districts in which I've worked, they've always done that some , but to see that we are on board with that. So just wanna say thank you to the community, the teachers, and the parents for your pick of choice to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins.
Other board members? All right, thank you, thank you very much for this report.
Thank you.
Ms. Roof, you want me to wait on you or go forward?
You can go ahead, I have the agenda back up.
Okay, great. And now we'll move to item eight point two, an update on back to school. Dr. Davis?
And thank you, Mr. Shad, and to the members of our board, to our viewing family members out in virtual land. We are gonna share some information, providing an update for you all regarding our back to school, our progress with back to school. As you know, we have shared some information here previously or recently regarding our return to school on November the fourth, as well as in verbally as well as in writing. We will, at this time, have Dr. Marshall and Franklin, who is leading this task force, come and present to you some more information regarding our back to school, our back to school initiative. Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Mr. Shad, members of the board. The district back to school task force has previously provided extensive reports to the board regarding the implementation of the district's reopening school plan. Tonight, we're providing an update on our back to school efforts with particular attention to Phase Two. This past Friday, it was announced to the Richland Two family that we will begin Phase Two on Wednesday, November fourth. Phase Two is then we will offer a face-to-face learning option. Our focus remains on four key areas: health and safety, operations, academics, and communication. The district back to school task force remains committed to supporting our schools as each school's task force leaves the school and implementing our plan. Health and safety. Our nurses have been trained in contact tracing. Our health services team led by Dawn McAdams has developed a detailed contact tracing checklist that helps to ensure proper procedures are followed for both employees and students. In addition to our standard health room spaces, schools have identified a space in which students who begin to demonstrate symptoms can be isolated while they await a parent to pick them up from school. This concept is similar to the well waiting area and sick waiting area found in most pediatrician offices. While we always ask parents to partner with us in their children's education, we're also asking parents to partner with us in ensuring the health of our employees and students. Parents are expected to conduct symptom checks each morning and to not send or bring symptomatic students to school. I repeat, we are counting on our parents to conduct symptom checks each morning and to not bring or send symptomatic students to school. Face coverings are required of students and employees. This requirement extends to school buses and classroom spaces. This requirement also extends to guests who visit our campuses. While visitors will not be permitted beyond the front office area, anyone coming into the building must wear a face covering prior to entry. In addition to face coverings, we will practice social distancing to the greatest extent possible. In classroom seating arrangement, the speed of social distancing is not possible or optimal. We will use barriers and dividers. One additional measure that will definitely help with in-person school is for our students and employees to get a flu shot prior to beginning Phase Two. Operations. Each school has been provided a variety of health and safety items. In each classroom, students will apply hand sanitizer upon entering and exiting the room. Throughout the school day, high-frequency touch points like handrails and door handles will be cleaned regularly throughout the day. At the end of the day, buildings will be deep cleaned using appropriate cleaning solutions and strategies. To ensure the best indoor air quality in our buildings, we are using MERV eight or higher rated air filters and have increased the frequency at which air filters are changed out. In Phase Two, we will resume providing meals at school sites. Our community-based food distribution will come to an end. Students attending school in-person course will eat on-site, and students participating in e-learning will have the opportunity to pick up meals from their respective school. Buses will operate at no more than sixty-six percent capacity and will be cleaned after a lot routes are completed. Bus schedules will be available soon. We do however encourage parents who are able to transport their children to and from school to do so, as this further reduces the number of students on the bus. Academics. We have select groups of students who are already receiving in-person services and instruction. Some of our students with unique abilities, as well as our three- and four-year-old students. Students and employees working with them are wearing masks and practicing the safety protocol beautifully. Additionally, nursing coverage is provided for both programs. In Phase Two, we will have three learning model options. Students who are elected to participate in the R-two-E school will continue with that learning model. Students who in Phase One participated in e-learning provided by their school have the option of remaining in e-learning or coming to school face-to-face. Secondary students participating in the face-to-face learning model option will be divided into two groups based on the first letter of their last name. The AA group will consist of students whose last names begin with the letters A through L. Those students will attend school in-person on Mondays and Tuesdays. The BB group will consist of students whose last names begin with the letters M through Z, and those students will attend school in-person on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Students in both groups, AA and BB, will have a flex day on Friday. The flex day will consist of individual and small group sessions with teachers and supplemental classwork. Flex days will also provide our secondary teachers much-needed planning and collaboration time. At the elementary level, we'll utilize some early dismissal days and extended planning days, provide our elementary teachers their much-needed planning and collaboration time. The dates for those early dismissals will be shared with parents in our Next U and Two newsletter. In Phase Two, daily or bell schedules will closely resemble that of a traditional school day. There are some differences, but they resemble our traditional schedule quite a bit. Schedules will be made available to students and parents by their school by the end of this week. Students attending school in-person will have opportunities for mass breaks, and students participating in e-learning will have opportunities for breaks away from the computer screen. Communication. In addition to our U and Two newsletters and Facebook Live, we're adding a few more communication tools to help us effectively communicate with our families and employees. A COVID-nineteen dashboard will be available on the district's website. This will serve as our notification system of COVID cases in our school. As the events of this school year are fluidly adapted, Part One of the Student Parent Handbook was published at the start of Phase One. Part Two of the handbook will be published and made available to families at the start of Phase Two. The Communications Department has begun drafting a Phase Two FAQ. This document is designed to answer some of the most frequent questions we receive from employees and parents. Lastly, we begin a video series entitled Communication Corner. This is yet another means of providing employees, parents, students, and our community the information they need. That concludes today's back to school update. My team and I welcome the questions and comments.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins.
Thank you so much for that report. Just a few questions I have for you. When we're talking about the secondary students, we know that they have designated days. If they're ill and it has nothing to do with COVID, maybe something with not even the flu, maybe minor cold or asthma, something like that, and they miss their designated day, are they allowed to come on a different day or they have to stick to this schedule here?
Well, I'm grateful we're delivering instruction. If a student like just wakes up, let's say, in the morning and doesn't feel well enough to come to school, but still feels well enough to participate in class, they can participate online.
Okay.
That day.
Okay, very good. And the second question, I know you mentioned that buses will operate at sixty-six percent capacity. Now, tell me, kind of give me a walkthrough on that, because I'm just wondering, will we have to make triple stops to pick up all of the students? Or how would that work? What would that look like?
Let me yield to Mr. Anderson on that one, he knows that one better than I.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Elkins. The routes are being made right now. We feel pretty confident that we'll be able, based on the number of students that we, based on the survey results they filled out and they're making their selections, that our routes will not change. It's possible if more students continue to come back and we stay at that sixty-six percent threshold, that we may have to double or triple route. So for example, a bus may hold seventy students, and in this scenario that it now is only sixty-six percent, you're now looking more like forty-something students on that bus. So it's possible that a route last year that had seventy students, and it still has seventy this year, may go, may have to go back twice. But based on the numbers we're having right now, that we're having about fifty percent less students in person, of people in person, and that number is less for amount of riders, we think with the amount of buses we have and with the amount of riders and drivers, that we should, the impacts of making sure kids get to school safely and on time will be minimal or none.
Okay, and just a few more questions concerning the bus. The other thing is, I think if, and Dr. Franklin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Dr. Franklin mentioned that we will go ahead and sanitize the buses at the end of the route. Is that each route or once we've completed all of the routes?
So how that'll work, Dr. Elkins, is, so in the bus, the middle school route, they'll go and do the, how it'll work is the children will have to have a mask when they get on the bus. If they don't, our drivers will provide them with a mask. And these sanitizer on the bus, and so they'll sanitize. The driver will do what they normally do, ask how you're doing, you know, good morning, but they'll kind of, you doing okay, everything all right? Just a quick little check to make sure, you know, if the student says they're not feeling well, then, you know, we don't need you to ride today, et cetera. Trying to make sure that, we won't deny them, but we need to make sure that they, that we're doing that check as well. They'll have a, they'll have assigned seats on the bus, and so that they make sure that we'll sit in the assigned seats and spaced out as much as possible. And then once they do all the routes and drop the kids off at, say, the middle school, before they go pick the elementary school, the driver will quickly, with the solution, the Bi-Rex and solution we have, will wipe down seats. They'll have gloves and all that stuff on, and then they'll finish doing the same for elementary and then high school. And once they're done with that, then they'll bring the bus back to the hub and do the electrostatic sprayer. The windows will be down in the buses, spaced out, and then we actually, the State Department just approved today, I believe, or yesterday, a shield that will go behind the driver, another plexiglass shield, to try to help provide more safety and for the driver as well.
Thank you, and you answered one of my questions, because I was going to ask if we're going to assign seats, but you answered that. And just a last question, and maybe Dr. Davis can chime in on this, on Mr. Anderson, if you're not sure. How are we looking with bus drivers? Do we have plenty? And also, if we have plenty, are we looking at maybe trying to give some type of bonus or incentive to our bus drivers or try to bring more on? Thank you so much for answering those questions, too.
Yes, ma'am. To answer your drivers, we are still recruiting drivers. We're still trying to get those in as quickly as possible, working with our driver training department, making sure that the drivers, we recruit them and they go through the training in the, in an efficient manner. We are working with our HR department to make sure that we get those drivers in. But as of, as of today, we are not fully staffed, but we have enough drivers based on our current number of people riding to get the children to school safely and efficiently. And in terms of your other question, we are working with HR and finance as always, but I yield to Dr. Davis if he wants to make any comments on that.
Okay.
At this time, we've not discussed whether or not we are doing bonuses, particularly for bus drivers or any other staff. Those are, those are some considerations that we will be looking at, but no promises have been made, so I hope.
Okay, that's fine, I was just checking. Thanks for letting me do this. Okay.
All right, other board members?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank, yeah, just wanted to say thank you for the folks that have put in hard work, I know behind the scenes, you all gave us an opportunity to have, to have smaller group sessions and to ask questions ad nauseam, and I was able to do that beforehand. But for the people that have put all of the work in, this is a fluid, this is a very fluid process, as our numbers change daily, so does our situation. But for the lots of moving on these decisions, I just want to say, I appreciate, there's no perfect scenario. The overarching issue that we're dealing with is not perfect, but I appreciate you all taking the time to keep us updated with regard to details. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Zagostini?
Thank you, Mr. Shad. And I also want to thank Dr. Davis and Dr. Franklin for, and all that work so hard to make this opportunity to give our students and families the choice of either having virtual or face-to-face instruction. One question that I have, how will the students be eating lunch? How will lunch be served at the, at the different levels, the elementary, middle, and high school levels?
Yes, ma'am. This is Will again. Sorry about my screen, it's hard to see the light. Anyway, our Food Service Department and Sodexo is working with every school to safely formulate a plan to make sure that the children are getting their meals and getting them safely. Right now, the plan is to work with the schools at the elementary level, either going through the line or having the schools deliver those meals or working with Sodexo to get those meals in the classroom. When I say go through the line, they may go through the line, but they will still have to, to maybe bring those back to the classrooms. And the reason for that is that while we do have all the free meals that we, that we graciously appreciate from the Department of Ed and from the, from this federal government, we do still have to appropriately claim. So if we serve five hundred meals, we have to make sure we have all the documentation that each, each person got those meals. And so there's some paperwork and stuff that's, strings attached to that, that we're making sure that we get those done appropriately. So we're all, but safety's the most thing. So elementary schools will be eating in the classrooms, the middle, the secondary levels will be doing hybrid approaches based on the schools of, of making sure that they're either in the cafeteria or other spots throughout the school, back in the classroom, multiple points of, of places for them to get food and working on schedule. So those are kind of site-specific, but they're, they're based on the capacity limits in those spaces, social distancing guidelines, and each will look, may look a little different at each school based on the cafeteria, the size of the school, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Elkins?
Yes, just want to say to Dr. Davis and the team, thank you for giving us the transparency and the opportunity to ask questions in advance, and as well as to ask questions if questions spark from presentations. So thank you for allowing us to be individual, to ask questions beforehand or after presentations. I think that's what our parents, our teachers want to see and want to hear. So thank you for giving us that opportunity of not shutting us down and allowing us to ask questions when questions spark. So thank you for giving us that opportunity of not shutting us down and allowing us to ask questions when questions spark our mind at that time. Thank you.
Any other board members? Well, I want to applaud Dr. Davis, Dr. Franklin, Mr. Anderson, the team on such a great presentation, and of course, have taken a measured approach to going back. As we've obviously fielded calls and emails and other ways of communication from our family, you know, we always want to stress that we don't operate in fear, but we do operate out of caution. And we don't, we do listen to the science. And as one parent said in public participation, you know, we follow the science, and this is where we are. The science has led us now to, you know, November fourth opening. And as Dr. Franklin said, this is an option. It's a face-to-face option, because, you know, some parents did believe that we were forcing their children to go back into school, and that's not the case. The option to still do virtual learning is there. And so I applaud you all that we are now in, thankfully, we are moving into phase two, because the county is, is moving in a, in a great direction. And the hope, of course, is that the adults will still do what they need to do so that the spread will continue to dissipate, so that our students and our faculty are in a much safer situation. Still some angst, but, you know, I'm confident with where we're going as a district, and I'm sure the board shares those same sentiments. So thank you all so much. All right, if there's nothing else, we will move to item ten, I'm sorry. Item nine point one, agenda items for the next, next meeting. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Chairman Shad. Thank you, members of the board. And I would echo too, Mr. Shad. I appreciate you pointing out those very important facts regarding our transition from phase one to phase two. I think it's an understatement when we talk about the sincerity of this district's administration to keep our students safe and keep our teachers safe a, as best as we could by following our plan. It's important for our teachers to know, as well as our parents to know, who may have any concerns or angst about transitioning to phase two, in order for us to have a sense of integrity. When we stood with the DHEC data back when we were, kept everyone virtual, as we opposed back several months ago our phase-in plan, that when the data suggested we would begin to transition, when the data suggested we will begin to transition to face-to-face, and as we promised, we would not take away options. We will only add options. So for those who were, who were patient and waited for us to add the options, we thank you for your, your support. As we know, you will continue to support the district. And for those who were impatient and could not wait for us to add the options, again, we understand what your consideration, your concerns were, but it was not out of a sense of defiance that we did not want to support what you wanted, but it was a sense of obligation to follow the science to make sure that we are making the best choices and decisions for our entire community. And that is a heavy burden to bear for those of us that are in these leadership roles, including the members of this, the seven members of this board, that our responsibility is into, is to our entire community in Richland School District Two. And that is a multitude and diverse group of individuals, even students, parents, grandparents, and all those households that we have the honor of providing educational services for their most precious resources, which is their children. So I applaud you all for standing firm and supporting this administration in following the plan that we all agreed on, that we would follow. And hats off to you for doing, for doing so and being leaders in this community for, for, for our students and for their families, as well as for our teachers. I wanted to say that because, because it was something I think that has gotten lost in translation as we've been dealing with some very, sort of some very contentious issues as relates to our plan, as well as the comparisons of our plans to other school districts' plans. But I think as we continue to work, what the work that we've done to good, together collectively as, as a family and as a team, continues to put us in a position where we say we are striving to be premieres. So I do want to say thank you for that. As we look at our upcoming board meeting for October the twenty-seventh, we have presented to you an agenda, a draft agenda for your consideration. We will, as normal, start our Zoom meeting at four thirty. Now, we anticipate this being our last fully Zoom meeting. We, we, we did say that when we went to phase two, we would then, as a, as a district leadership team, begin the process of coming in and having our meetings. And district administration is making the proper preparations to make sure that board members are, are safe and that those individuals who would be here are also are safe. So we're going to take those protocols and put those protocols into practice here at the district office. So this may very well be, I pray this is the last virtual, full virtual meeting, that we don't have to ever go back to doing this as a condition of a pandemic. But this meeting will start at four thirty, and we will ask for a, we'll call it to order, and it will ask for a vote to go into executive session. Currently, we have student appeals and the student admissions into the district's adult education program. But the student appeals may, we may not need that, so that may be stricken throughout this week. We will then ask for the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance, followed by the approval of our agenda, and then the approval of the consent agenda. We'll have our first public participation at six point one, followed by our voting items on executive session items. And those items will cover the student appeals and student admissions into the district's adult education program, should they be any. We'll follow that with item eight point one, which falls under old business action requested, where we'll be asking the board for the approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar. Followed by that will be new business, no action requested, where we are prepared to share information with you, will provide you a report about our budget. And so we'll have Dr. Miley come before you and our community on the twenty-seventh to give an update and a report on our, on our budget. We'll then share the draft agenda for the November the tenth meeting, which we anticipate to be our, again, our face-to-face meeting. We'll have the approval of our agenda items. We'll ask for the approval of that draft agenda, followed by public participation number two, board and superintendent comments. If we need an executive session two, we will, we will convene for that, followed by voting items if needed. And if not, we'll move from board and superintendent comments to item sixteen point one, which will be adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And now we'll move to item ten point one, approval of the draft agenda items for October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Mackey?
I'm going to approve the draft agenda items for the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, public meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Any discussion? Seeing none, please register your vote.
Vote is six to one.
Thank you. The motion carries. Now to eleven point one, public participation. That was handled in the first session of public participation. And so now on to item twelve point one, board and superintendent comments. And I will start, let's see, I'll start with Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank General Beagle for providing our inspirational moment this evening and for a service for all of us. Have a great night.
Thank you. And Dr. Elkins?
It's just great to end the meeting so early. Everyone gets to go home and have their early dinner, so thank you for that. And also, Dr. Franklin and your team, Mr. Anderson and Dr. Davis, thank you so much for what you've done to get us ready for phase two. I'm excited, because I am ready to get back in schools and see the great things that the teachers are doing and all of my sweet peas, as I call them. So thank you for what you're doing, and I'm looking forward to November fourth. Thanks. You guys, continue to wear your masks, be safe. And the final thing, kindness was last month, but let's continue to practice that every month and every day. Be blessed.
Thank you. Mr. Manning?
Yeah, also wanted to echo the sentiments, Dr. Davis, your team, the effort that has gone into this and the effort that we'll continue to go into. There's, as we get questions, the, the amount of minutia that's involved, and I don't mean minutias and just small things, but the little details that have to be worked out are still enormous. So thank you to, to everyone, everybody in the district. Our maintenance staff, our bus drivers, our teachers, or, I mean, I, I could go through the list, but it really is an enormous effort. So we appreciate what everyone is doing, what they will do to make sure that our community is taken care of and that our students receive the, the best education that, that we can give them. So thank you very much for all of that.
All right, thanks, sir. And Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just echoing the sentiments of everyone who's working on everything that we're doing to educate our kids. Bless you. People who are, who are watching tonight and watching the video later, you're still attending the meeting and taking your time to try to be engaged and keep up with what we're doing and share accurate information. Thank you for that. Y'all be safe. COVID numbers are still, COVID numbers, those numbers represent people who are sick or who are deceased. So praying for those families who have been affected, including our own. So thank you for everyone who is here, for those who are sharing. Bless you for that. And for Brigadier General Milford Beagle, I cannot thank him enough. He actually couldn't come the first meeting or two that I asked him to come to, and he worked hard within his schedule to try to set a time to be here. So he's a very busy man. The fact that he took the time to work us into his schedule was very gracious of him. He's very accomplished, but he's a very gracious and kind man. And it's always a blessing when we're able to share that infectious spirit with our Richland Two community. So y'all have a good evening. Be safe. Bless you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Caution Parker?
Okay, first, I'd just like to say such inspiring words by General Beagle. I've, I've heard him speak many times, even visited his homeless several times, but he always has such inspiring words to share. And, and I deeply appreciate that and appreciate his leadership. Coming from a military family, all the way back to great uncle in World War One, I think that everything that he says and the way he lives, he walks the talk, and I deeply appreciate it. And Dr. Davis and the Richland Two team, all I can say to you is thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart, and keep up the good work. Love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Holmes?
Okay, I would like to say thank you to General Beagle. We appreciate your words of inspiration. And I, I have to commend our wonderful, wonderful administrative staff and superintendent and board of Richland School District Two. This has been a collective effort to make sure that our students and teachers and bus drivers and everyone is, is safe. It is hard to sit on a board to make such tough decisions, but you have to do it, because that's why you voted for us. And it's been tough, but I think we, we've held the line and we've made sure that our students and everyone else can be as safe as we possibly can in this type of environment. Just know that we love you, we appreciate you, Dr. Davis and your staff. I know how many hours of work has gone behind this. We appreciate you also. And with that, y'all just have a great evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Holmes. Thank you, members of the board. Dr. Davis?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Thank you to our board members and to our, again, to our viewing public and family members out there watching us through Zoom and/or on Facebook Live or our YouTube page. I think so much has been said about what General Beagle said this, this afternoon and his inspirational words. I want us as a, as a collective group of educators in this school district and parents that are watching, community members, whomever, to share that message, but, but, but consider this. Let's, let's make a commitment and a promise that no other young student has that story. That story has repeated itself too many times in, in this, in this state. I've never, did not meet General Beagle until we were both adults, and he was stationed to Fort Jackson. But I have the same story, and there are so many others that have the same story, where an adult in our school looked us in the face and told us that we weren't college material. But also, let's give a shout out to those who raise children to be resilient, to teach them to battle adversity, and not help them avoid the adversity, but teach them how to overcome adversity and not to succumb to adversity. So shout out to all the parents, to General Beagle's mother and father, to my grandmother, to, to anybody who's ever had a story like that, whose, whose family and their community taught them how to fight and how to survive and how to be strong in adverse situations, because those are things that are gonna happen. But let's make a commitment as a community, as a family of educators and leaders, and people who love children, to never have that story be told again, specifically that have that story to be told in Richland School District Two. Because I don't want to hear that story anymore. I don't want anyone else to have a story where an adult looks them in the face and tell them, "You can't do something," or "You're not able to do something," or "You're not cut from the right cloth," or "You don't come from the right family." "You don't have enough money," or "You don't have this," or "You don't have that," and "You can't read," or "You can't do math," or whatever it may be. Let's figure out a way to help them overcome whatever the adverse challenges they have in their lives and give them a fighting opportunity to be the most successful. You have a general, a superintendent, lawyers, doctors, people who have overcome so much. Let's encourage them, so when they look back over their story, they can say your name in a positive way, that you encourage them to, to be anything that they can be and do anything that they can do. And so I, I, I just ask us to, let's, let's make a commitment not to have a story like that again. Really quickly, on October, October's National Principals Month, the month, this month and every month, I want to thank each of our premier principals for their leadership and unwavering commitment to our students, staff, and the community at large. The entirety of the two families grateful and appreciative of your service to the school district. While we could not say, never say, while we could never say or show it enough, please know that you are valued and appreciated. Please look for an ad this month in the Northeast news, saluting each of you for the work that you do. Since September fifteenth, the district has been celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we are closing out this month-long celebration on Thursday, October the fifteenth, with the virtual Taste and Sounds of Salsa. Please check out the district's Facebook account to participate. The Richland Two Teacher Forum is participating with the League of Women Voters. We'll host a virtual candidate forum on, at six thirty PM on Tuesday, October the twentieth. The community is invited to watch the forum online at richlandtwo.org/livestream to hear their opinions and position of Richland Two's Board of Trustees candidates. There are ten candidates that are running to fill three positions. The candidates are Ms. Lizzy Agostini, Ms. Dee Bell Williams, Dr. Monica Elkins Johnson, Mr. Deion Jacobs, Ms. LaShonda McFadden, Ms. Rhonda Meisner, Mr. James Mobley, Mr. James, Jamie Shad III, Mr. Lawrence Taylor Terry, I'm sorry, and Ms. Mary Ann Wright. Current members that are serving and running for reelection are Ms. Agostini, Dr. Elkins Johnson, and Mr. Shad. If you were not aware, fifteen schools and approximately twelve hundred and forty-five military-connected students in Richland Two will benefit from a one million dollar grant from the U.S. Department of Education Activity. The Whole Child Initiative Grant will provide college and career-ready resources necessary to successfully expand the district's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics program. Over the next four and a half years, the grant will serve students at the Center for Achievement, the Center for Inquest, Bethel Hambury, Bookman Road, Bridge Creek, Catawba Trails, Killian, Lake Carolina Upper and Lower Campuses, Langford, Rice Creek, Round Top, and San Laver Elementary Schools, and Blythewood and Mull Road Middle Schools. Richland Two's Director of Virtual Schools Program, Dr. Emily Managold, has been selected to join the South Carolina Competency-Based Learning Fellows Cohort. This program is provided by the State Department of Education's Office of Personalized Learning. Dr. Managold is only, is one of only thirty selected to participate in this program. And congratulations to Ridgeview High School Assistant Principal Brandon Ross on being selected by the Thomas Media Group and the South Carolina Black Pages to their twenty-twenty class of the top twenty under forty. This class is composed of outstanding business professionals, entrepreneurs, doctors, and community organizers. So our community, continue to stay safe, continue to show kindness, continue to, continue to show your Richland Two pride. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. By the way, Mr. Ross is a shamrock, just so you'll know. I just need you to know that. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the great reports, especially Dr. Beagle, Dr. Beagle, General Beagle. Uh, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the great reports, especially Dr. Beagle, Dr. Beagle, General Beagle. Um, Ms. Mackey, thank you for, um, knocking it out of the park again with, with someone who is, whose story is inspiring, but also gave us, left us with some inspiring words as well. Um, I'll be very brief. Uh, I had the honor, uh, as your board chair to, on last Thursday, to participate on a panel, uh, with the SESBA, uh, Beyond the Basics course, and the theme was about having civility during this pandemic and us as a board being in the trenches. And so I was honored that, you know, Richland District Two, um, evidently they saw something in us to say, we must be doing something right and, and what can we do to impress upon other board members who's going through tough times, just like we are in their various communities. And so I did stress the point that we, um, work collaboratively. We may have differences of opinions at times. We may ha, ask tough questions, may receive tough answers, but the end goal is to make sure that every child receives an equitable premier education and that the adults will continue to be adults and show that civility and be good examples for the students who are watching us. And so we'll continue to do that, um, while we are in this capacity, and we are still a family. We are still a family. So let's, um, continue with that theme. Yes, kindness needs to be done every day. I appreciate the, uh, the, uh, district putting a focus on it in the month of September. But of course, we don't check, uh, unkindness on October 1st, so we will continue that as well. Um, and so you all have a wonderful evening. Continue to stay safe, mask up, practice physical distancing, at distancing at least six feet apart, and let's keep continuing to stop the community this spread of this terrible disease. Thank you all very much. Y'all have a, oh, not before this. Uh, no matters on a second executive session, so I will entertain a motion at 15.1 to adjourn.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Mackey?
I move to adjourn the October 13th, 2020, Richland Two School Board Meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Ms. Agostini. Any discussion? Seeing none, you can just raise your hands if you're in favor. Excellent. And thank you, Ms. McDaniel. We have a new board assistant. She's assisting us. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. And, um, the vote was 70 to 0, but thank you again, and you guys have an amazing rest of your evening.
Wonderful. Thank you. I echo those sentiments. Y'all have a great evening. Take care.